Good morning. This is the meeting of the City Council on February 1st of the year 2000. I'm Councilmember Ruth Galanter, President Pro Tem of the Council. Mr. Ferraro is excused today. The Council meets at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, or as close to it as we can get a quorum. We are being viewed on Channel 35, which will rebroadcast in the evening and the whole thing again on Sunday. And we are also available by council phone. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Berndsen, Chegg, Furyk, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kosky, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Warren, Swax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Splendid. Let's do the first item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, so ordered.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, we'll do those as well.
The next item is the salute to the flag.
All right, let's have Mr. Ridley Thomas lead us in the salute to the flag.
Would you face the flag, put your writing over your heart, ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, we will have, it being the first day of the new month, we will have an invocation by Rabbi Kellimer from Congregation Mogendoveg. Rabbi, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I just want to mention introduction that I, coming in, I met Nate Holden, reminded me that he spoke two years ago of our synagogue, and we gave him an honorary title of Rabbi Holden. And just to mention, no, it was St. Patrick's Day, so he gave me a very nice Catholic card, which I appreciated in return. My friends, after I finish the amen of the prayer, I just have an addendum, so I will not be finished with the first amen. I'm going to go into a second amen, but not long at all. Our God and God of our fathers, these great leaders are here to make momentous decisions regarding the general welfare of our city. In fact, in our Torah, which you just read this past Sabbath, about the qualifications of the leadership of the Jewish people, we find this prescription in Exodus, Chapter 18, verse 21. "And you shall discern from among the entire people, men of accomplishment, God-fearing people, men of truth, people who despise money; and you shall appoint them leaders of thousands, leaders of hundreds, leaders of fifties, and leaders of tens." Dear God, please give these noble and outstanding leaders good health for longevity, in order to enable our community to go from strength to strength. Amen. I did not know of the tragedy of Mr. Ferraro's family when I composed the PS, but I know of Mr. Ferraro's watching, and he'll hear about it, that I added this PS. May Mr. Ferraro's favorite football team, the USC Trojans, have even better luck next fall. May they stand and not fall. Amen. And in this sense, in a very serious sense, I express my condolences, condolences of our community, to the great Mr. John Ferraro on the passing of his dear wife, Margaret. I was told that wherever Margaret is, she would have enjoyed my addendum about the Trojans, although I was told she was a Notre Dame fan. And peace still reigned in the family. And may the great councilmen only know of happy occasions. And my dear friends, in this sense, as we have a wish in our Jewish community, may we only meet on happier occasions, and this is my final. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. All right. The next item, Mr. Padilla, I believe you have a presentation? Sure, just let me know when you're ready. All right. Next item. Turn off that microphone before we carry on the rest of this conversation. All right, let's go back to business here.
Items number 33 and 35, a request that these matters be continued until March 29th.
So ordered.
Item number 46, a request by the City Attorney to have this matter continued two weeks till February 15th.
Without objection, we'll do that as well.
Item number one on the regular agenda is item notice for public hearing. It's also associated with item number seven. Both are planning and land use management committee reports.
Well, let's take both of them together. We have any cards on, you're working from the back here, do we have any cards on item one? All right, we are now on item one and item seven. If there's anyone from the public wishing to address those issues, now's the time, and please fill out a card. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and we have before us item one and item seven. Anybody? Quick, while there's no speaker queue, we have no speakers wishing, no council members wishing to speak?
On item one?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, one, I don't have any.
But I push buttons so we can do this properly here.
Members of the Council, this is extremely important to the process of daycare and childcare. One of the requirements that we were asking, that we sent back to committee, was for further review as to how we could implement the insurance requirement. What we're finding out is that that particular requirement, and again, I'm not sure it was still on there, because it looks like it's been removed.
Well, is there something we need to do? Do you want to hold it on the desk while we?
Right, I'd like to hold it on the desk. I just know it's important, but that was a requirement that would make it prohibitive at the time.
Okay, so let's, we're going to hold items one and seven on the desk, and you're going to tell me when you have found the answer to this question. All right, next item. Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy, did you want to speak on this?
I was going to try to answer, I think, Mike, the areas that you were concerned about were in item number seven, not in item one, which talks about support for the state legislation, generally mandating that life, that insurance be carried for people who are providing daycare, but also send that matter back to committee to help us, help some of those who might be on a smaller scale of daycare providers. And I think there was also a discussion to send it back to the children, youth, and their families to see if there's going to be other programs there. But generally, item seven was support of the state legislation.
Mr. Hernandez.
I agree with that recommendation. I just want to make sure that that's what the recommendation is, because the way it's directed on the report, we referred that to the city clerk. And I just want to make sure that that went back to the commission, as well as to the committee.
All right, but now, let me.
That recommendation number five.
That's related to number seven. Are you, you're also recommending item one also?
We're both recommending item one.
All right, so both, both one and seven.
Right.
Would then go back to the Plum Committee and the Commission on Children, Youth, and Families.
Right.
All right. Anybody else have any comment? Seeing none, that's what we'll do.
No, no, okay. Madam Chair, I'm sorry. We're passing item one with a reference that the item number five recommendation.
Item number seven.
No, I'm item number one, the report.
Yeah.
That item number five of the report be sent back to Plum, add to the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families. See, right now, it says we.
I only see four items on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, that was done then, okay.
So the fifth one seems to have disappeared already.
Okay, that was my only.
So in that case, item one.
I want item one passed.
All right, so we're not sending it off. Hold on, sorry about that. Now, is that consistent with what you said? All right, so item one is before us, and also item seven?
Item seven.
And item seven. Let's try it again. Open the roll. Whoops, hold it, Mr. Wax.
Let me just give a very, very brief summary of what is involved here on this ordinance.
Basically, the ordinance will allow for, the state currently can permit people to provide childcare services of six or less. Our ordinance basically required eight or less for them to take out a permit. So now, we're going to be in concurrence with the state ordinance. We were now looking at the question of liability. However, the state doesn't make that requirement, and that's putting that requirement would make it prohibitive in many cases, so we're trying to find a solution for that particular angle. So what's currently before us is basically a system that's in concurrence with state law, that's what we're asking to pass, and it would increase the possibilities of more permitting in the city of Los Angeles, because we were disparate from that of the state. At the same time, we're reviewing how to deal with potential liability problems that basically are not the city's liability as much as the state's, because they don't have that same requirement when they put the permit.
Okay. Okay. Now, we'll try it again. Open the roll on item one and item seven. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank goodness, let's move to the next item.
Madam President, I misspoke on continuing items 33 and 35.
Yeah, I thought you said 33.
That should have been 34 and 35 that are continued until March 29th.
All right, so 34 and 35 are continued, 33, which is a closed session, will be held today. Okay, now, let's.
Items number two through 17 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number seven has been acted on.
Six special.
All right, six.
Padilla's called a six special.
Okay, all right, okay. Item six will be called special, any other specials? All right, open the roll on items two through, what was it, 17?
Two through 17 with the exceptions.
Two through 17, except for six.
And seven.
And seven, which we've already acted on. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, next item.
Fourth with on two and three.
President, fourth with on four, please.
On four.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
You didn't ask my commission card.
Yeah, but he asked mine, which is what counts.
Items number 18 through 32 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, we have cards on several of those. We have a card on 19, we have a card on 20. We're starting a pool of who can guess first whose cards they are. We have a card on 23 and 36. Now, you don't, we don't have a card on 22. Just hold on. I'm just reading the ones we have cards on here, hold on. Okay.
Twenty, 20 special as well.
20 special. And what about 22? You were.
Yes, we just want to have a quick amendment.
To 22.
It was omission.
All right, hold on, hold on.
Technical.
All right. Any other specials?
22 don't need to be special.
19 has a card. 20, 22, 23, all right, so we'll hold.
Madam President.
Wait, wait a second, so far, we're holding 19, 20, 22, and 23 out, and we're about to find out if we're going to have to.
Just, it's a technical error, typo, Michael Kosh.
On, well.
On 22, and you can just adopt it.
Well, we're going to get there in a second. There's a card on it, so I can't just adopt it. We need to let the public speak. Thank you, Michael, but just hold on. So let's do the rest of them. Conrad, would you run through again with?
Item 18, 21, 24 through 32.
Okay. Everybody paying attention? Open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very nice. All right, now, let's go back through item 19, we have a.
Finish the agenda.
Oh, yeah, all right, let's finish the agenda first.
Items number 36 through 48 are items for which public hearings have been held. I believe there's a card on 36.
There's a card on 36, and a card on, oh, 57, 57 is later, all right. So we have card on 36, so hold that one. And let's, do we have any? Sorry, go ahead. Do we have any members of the council wishing to speak on any of the rest of those items? What a subdued crowd today. All right, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, next item.
Items number 49 through 61 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, we have a card on 57. So hold that one. Any members of the council, are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on those items? Seeing none, are the public hearings are closed? Is there anybody on the council wishing to speak on any of those items? Seeing none, open the roll. It's all of them except 57. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Madam President, forthwith on item 59, please.
Let's, first, they're all approved, and then, forthwith on 59.
Yeah, Madam President, could we also be forthwith on item 30?
Sure, forthwith on item 30.
To the City Attorney's.
Anybody else?
City Attorney's Office.
They might like that, yes. Okay, next item.
Items number 33 and 62 are closed session items. Now before you is item number six, called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Okay, would you push the button there? Mr. Padilla.
Thank you. I actually would like department staff to come forward, if there's anybody here from the department, have some basic questions.
Okay. Do we have somebody from the department? If not, we're going to hold them on the desk while we get somebody from the department. Yeah. Forthwith on 32, let's hold item six till we get somebody. Forthwith on thirty-two, let's hold item six till we get somebody from the department. Will somebody go call the department, please? They're here. Where are they? Ah, there they are, all right. Item six is back. Got to move fast, guys. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me begin by saying how this item came to my attention. Last week, under the leadership of the chair, Councilmember Wax, the Public Works Committee held a meeting in the Seventh Council District. And we heard from quite a number of people, concerns and questions about some of the septic tank areas in the Seventh District, the area where the sewer system is not interconnected. We heard concerns about spillage, we heard concerns about overflow, we heard concerns about insufficient maintenance and disposal of the waste in those systems. And we heard many, many a question about what we, as a city, are going to do about it. And so in reviewing today's council agenda, I know the specific motion before us has to deal specifically with restrictions or regulations that private haulers have or could have as proposed by Councilmember Burnson in depositing their waste into other city facilities. So my questions, and want to get a response from the department, is how are we dealing with some of the basic maintenance, basic cleaning issues in terms of our septic tanks, some of the safety issues as well, in light of this motion and in light of other things going on when it comes to our sewer system? The Tillman upgrades, our overall plan, and I believe we expect to report back in September of this year as to facility upgrades, et cetera.
Good morning, council members. I'm Jim Langley, Assistant Director, Bureau of Sanitation. What I'd like to do first is talk a little bit about our septic waste hauler program, and maybe Vince can give us an update as to where we are with that in the past year. It's a very new program and it addresses a lot of the issues that you brought up.
April of nineteen ninety-eight, the council approved the septic control program, which we got implemented in September. We've run it for a year. It's running very smoothly. This is focused on providing a facility that the septic haulers, those are the people that pump out the private, they own septic tanks and haul them for disposal in the city. And the site right now that we have is adjacent to the Donald C. Tillman Plant. We're receiving approximately thirty-five trucks a day. The operation is running smoothly and we are tasked to report back in September of this year on any recommended changes to the program or the fees and rates.
But can I, let me interrupt you just for a second, and I have your time off here, I'm holding it. But I think that it would be helpful if you would explain the difference between what happens in a private septic tank and the kind of septicage that you're talking about because it is a confusing issue.
Right. In the city of Los Angeles, there's a large number of properties that are still on septic tanks. And it's the responsibility of the owner to maintain and clean those tanks. There are private businesses, septic waste haulers that come to those sites and suck out those tanks, and then they transport it to the city for disposal. We have a facility that.
Actually, let me ask you some specific questions on that because what's ringing in my head is the landfill debate we just had a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago. Specific question, is the waste going, being brought in by the private haulers, is that originating from within the city of Los Angeles, or is this waste coming from outside our city limits?
It comes from both inside and outside, and there's rates for.
Okay, for that, for the waste coming in from outside the city limits, is there any revenues being generated by the city to help offset the burden that our infrastructure is?
Yes, there is, and there's different rates, and there's a higher rate for the waste coming from outside the city.
Okay, and the safety and environmental concerns about these types of systems are being sufficiently addressed, in your opinion?
Well, the responsibility for the actual systems on the private property is the property owner.
But they're hauling this stuff through our city streets and our highways and being disposed into city facilities.
Well, when the vehicles come to the city, we screen those loads, qualitatively analyze what's in there, we take samples to ensure that there's no hazardous material coming to the city. But at the source, we do not control the actual private properties. And I think that's where you had the issue.
Okay, now, because there is waste coming from outside the city into the city facilities, does that represent any backlog or any kind of impediment for our own city residents to have regularly, properly maintained septic tank systems?
No, I wouldn't say that, no.
Because the bottom line here is, we do have concerns. We have health concerns, environmental concerns, sanitation concerns, areas of the city, residential and non-residential, where the septic tanks overflow and they back up, and there's kids going to school that are nauseous to their stomach because of these things. What are we doing to help address those concerns? It's one system. I know this motion is very specific in nature, but overall, it's the same Department of Sanitation.
Let me, since I have three more people so far who want to speak, and your time's up, let's, we'll come back around to that. Mr. Burnson was next.
Members of the council, I still find it a little difficult to understand why this is a receive and file item. This seems to be a, something that is a very definite threat to our, to our health in the city of Los Angeles. And to allow the continued dumping of these wastes into the system, and, you know, I just, I don't understand why, I mean, I've listened to your explanations, I still can't comprehend it. I don't think we should allow it. I just wonder what we're doing, I know they're not supposed to do it, what are we doing to enforce?
Well, when the program was adopted by council and we set up the facilities, we corrected a long-term problem. When we had sites where these haulers could come and discharge, they were uncontrolled, there was stuff being splashed and slapped on the street. That doesn't happen anymore. They're all, they come into our one site and it's totally controlled.
And there's none of it going into, none of them being done outside of these sites?
Not within, not the septic waste haulers. They are not allowed to go to any other place except these, this one particular site we have in the city adjacent to the Tillman Plant.
Are you convinced that they're all doing that?
I haven't had any reports otherwise that we've had to investigate where they have not been following the requirements.
Well, if that is the case and that's accurate, then my concerns are a little less.
Right.
But I'm not convinced that people are taking the trouble to go to this site. And I also am not convinced, you know, other, you know, we have a lot of law-abiding citizens that continue to throw materials in their, in their regular garbage that belong in toxic, toxic fills rather than the sanitary fills. And, you know, it's a human nature type of thing. So are we, are we convinced that we're doing everything we, in our power to police and make sure that everybody's abiding by these new regulations?
Regarding the disposal of septic waste by the haulers, yes.
And all the haulers are complying? You've done, you've done follow-up investigations and everything else, huh?
Our, our problem is not with the haulers. Apparently, it's with the people who are just, as you point out, and Mr. Padilla did as well. It's if there are people who are not using a regular hauler and are doing something else. The haulers, we've been assured, are under control.
So what is, what the motion, what are we doing with those who are, you know, not under, not, not the haulers, but under, not under, under your control as haulers? Are we doing anything as far as enforcement with those folks?
In the past, when we've been called out to investigate a septic tank that is overflowing and leaking, we will make referrals to the Health Department.
You know, what I'd like to do. What I'd like to do, members of the council, I'd like to continue this for thirty days. And I'd like to ask that the department look into the possibility of doing an investigation as to how our enforcement policies are on the non-licensed haulers that we have that are doing, you know, that may be involved in.
But before we do that, let's let Mr. Ridley Thomas, as chair of the committee, say something. And Ms. Misakowski, as chair of the, former chair of the committee, also wants to say something. Then we come back to Mr. Padilla and then we'll see what happens. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, this item is really a result of a motion introduced by Mr. Burnson and seconded by Ms. Misakowski some two years ago approximately. Since that time, policy has been developed and implemented, as is indicated in the committee report. That which is before you is a motion to receive and file because the policy has taken care of the concerns that were raised in the original motion. And what we are essentially doing here is clearing the committee's backlog. The concerns that Mr. Padilla raised are legitimate unto themselves and may in fact warrant an additional action by way of a motion that the council ultimately would consider. But, Mr. Padilla, the committee would be glad to work with you on if you so, if you so desire. I guess the, the point here is for me to simply say, it is fully appropriate for us to proceed with receiving and filing the action that is before us, the item that is before us, and then proceeding with further steps based on new motions that might be submitted by anyone who is so inclined. So, Madam President, with that, I would so move that we can move forward with the committee report.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate some of that, that Mr. Ridley Thomas indicated. This is an older motion, and it was the motion itself that helped force the city, the city council and the septic haulers to the table so that it helped eliminate a lot of the problems of the past. In the past, what we had, and the Bureau of Sanitation can attest to this, we had these septic haulers who paid a minimal license in the city, who anytime they could find a manhole cover that wasn't well-guarded, and sometimes this was around Van Nuys Airport, for instance, on Havenhurst, they would pop the manhole cover and dump their, their tank load in there. And video cameras saw spillage and things like that that weren't being captured. So the city council, after much effort and much negotiation with the septic haulers, created both a fee that was a much higher fee and differential from inside and outside of the city, and a process where it could only now be taken to, at that time it was four, and that's now been reduced to, I think, the one, maybe two, different locations in the city where we have inspectors onsite all the time, they spot check the loads, they are put into modern facilities, which were paid for by the city and now being, being reimbursed by this fee. So the process of the haulers has been handled, and everyone who's a hauler working in the city has to have that license and showing it. I think the issues that you're talking about really go to the heart of where this material is produced. And the Bureau of Sanitation does have the maps to show those number of places in the city that are still on septic tanks and not sewers. And the issue is to whether or not we can look at sewer programs there. It would become something like a sewer assessment project in some of those areas. We might, by coaxing, by other, maybe grant monies, try to help them get onto a sewer system, which is the far better system. But there's no question that where we are today, and I think the legitimacy of receiving and filing this motion, which I had supported and brought in in the first month or two that I was in office as Chair of Environmental Quality, led us to a very, very modernized system that is now working well and paying for itself. But what we, I think what is really appropriate is to look at the source itself and see whether or not there are other tools, other ideas that would be suggested by the Bureau of Sanitation to help deal with it where it is being produced.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. So thank you, Councilmember Misakowski, for some of that additional information. But since the private, you too, Ridley Thomas. Since the private haulers are now going to designated locations, and that was something that was hashed out in the last two years, what is the status of enforcement of those new guidelines for the private haulers? And what is the status of any complaints that we may have been receiving of still ongoing, quote-unquote, illegal dumping of septic tank waste?
The program is running smoothly. We're not getting calls on illegal dumping regarding the septic haulers at this point.
None at all?
No, not that we've had. And we did investigate, though, for your office, a concern that there was septic leaking from private property recently into the street, and we, we looked into that. And in the past, when we do get calls like that, we'll always respond. And if it is coming from a private property, we've referred it to the Health Department. So they deal with the homeowner to, to correct their improperly running septic tank.
Okay, well, just to conclude on my part, I'll go ahead and agree with the committee chair's recommendation to receive and file this specific motion, but go on the record by saying that in the Public Works Committee, we will be hearing back on statute portion of the specific items and concerns that were raised in committee last week. And some of the issues that have been brought up today in terms of our septic tank program comprehensively, and some of the specific concerns that Councilmember Burnson has raised will be revisited as part of that discussion. Thank you.
I'd like to say I think that's a good idea. And you might want to work with Mr. Ridley Thomas and the Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee to make sure that we are addressing issues that are actually not covered by this motion, but which, as both you and Mr. Burnson have been pointing out, are very serious issues in the city. Just think about the cities that don't have sewer systems and they do it all on septic tanks. And tell us we're not doing enough about the environment. All right, so we have before us the motion to receive and file item number six, with the understanding that we will come back to address the broader issues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that is approved. Next item.
Item number nineteen, a request from the public to speak on this matter.
All right. Mr. Shapiro.
I'm here.
He was here.
I'm here.
There you are, okay.
I'm here.
Item nineteen.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, Madam President, and members of the city council, item nineteen concerns the floor area ratio as set up in the new charter without change. And people, to understand what's happening on this, have to understand what the floor area ratio is and how it was used in the past. The floor area ratio was basically used downtown to use the loopholes that were available in the city ordinance to allow them to build these skyscrapers. As it was set up, in most areas of the city, you can just build one and a half times the floor ratio. In other words, if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, you could build fifteen thousand square feet of building. But these skyscrapers had to build a lot more. So they had to use this floor area ratio, and they bought air rights. And they bought air rights from a lot of people, most of them from the city. The city didn't, didn't use what it was permitted. They passed a, an ordinance, you passed an ordinance that allowed them to get thirteen times the floor ratio. And because of the thirteen times, all of a sudden, the air above the convention center, the air above the, the public library, the air above Pershing Square became extremely valuable. And it was sold through the auspices of the CRA to build all the skyscrapers that we have downtown. Now, it's, you're bringing up a motion that you want to correct the, the floor area ratio, what it's all about, and what, how you, what are you going to do about it? Because Ms. Goldberg was complaining that there were some tilt-up warehouse buildings that were being put up in her area, and she thought that because these warehouses were three stories high, that there should be special laws pertaining to the use of the floor area ratio. So you're going to do that. You're going to have public storage facilities in the site, plan review, ordinance, we'll deal with the height and the bulk of the new structures, and the planning is preparing a report for the building commission. But in the meantime, your, your use, in my opinion, of FAR, floor area ratio, was practically verging on the criminal.
So, Mr. Shapiro, are you supporting item nineteen or are you opposing item nineteen?
Item nineteen is concerning the note and file.
No, I know what it's concerning. Are you opposing or, or supporting item nineteen?
Basically, I am not, I am opposing, I am opposing nineteen because I don't think there's been sufficient explanation given in the backup papers as to what FAR is all about. The average person just looks at it, doesn't understand what it's all about, and throws it aside and said, okay, it's a good law, we'll pass it.
All right.
I say you shouldn't because it resulted in too much criminal negligence occurring in the downtown area.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. The public hearing is closed. Ms. Goldberg.
Well, I'm informed we don't need to do this because we can make the changes that need to make, be made by ordinance, but then I'm also informed that the building, the planning commission has rejected the ordinance suggestion. So we're going, it's going to come here, but it'll come here after it's been rejected. And I just want to keep raising the alarm because it hasn't happened to you yet, but it will. Right now, by right, if you have a. Right now, by right, if you have a public storage in any part of your district, and they wish to take down up to 50,000 square feet of one-story buildings and build three-story buildings 200 feet long in a single block tilt-up, by right, right now, they can do it. In every one of your districts, they can do it right up at a corner, they can butt right up against residential, they can do it by right, they can do it. And if we don't change this ordinance that says that somehow or another, these kinds of uses belong in M zones, not C2 zones, if we don't do that, then my little problem in Glassell Park will become a citywide phenomenon. They are bringing in 60-foot trucks, they are bringing in boxes that carry 2,000 pounds that are seven feet tall, that are picked up in delivery. They can store household goods, they can store business goods. And they're going to put them everywhere they can because they believe that they can sneak in under the wire by tearing down their one-story buildings and putting these tilt-ups up. And I will tell you, I will predict for you that if they get away with it in Glassell Park, which will be the first one in a C2 zone, they will put them all over this city. So, I'm not going to fight this. They tell me we can do this by ordinance. Fine, we'll receive and file this. But when the ordinance comes, we have got to do something about it, or I will invite you to a little party to come and see what your future looks like because it's already available for view in CD-13.
All right. We have several more people who want to be heard. I just want to note that what's on the agenda today is just a report, it isn't actually an ordinance. So, note and filing it is different from receive and file, which means we don't pay any attention anymore. All right. Ms. Misakowski.
Yes, I was going to point out, Cindy, this is only noting and filing it. We're not making any inherent changes right now in the floor area ratio as per our current code. Ms. Goldberg's point on a bad or an abuse of a current FAR and what's allowed by right is not only just the FAR issue, it deals with site plan review and when something is discretionary or not. And it basically deals, as she indicated, with where, by right, these storage centers should be located. And she is correct that that very issue was just in planning commission last Thursday. They had two different ordinances in front of them, both of which should be supported. They only supported one, which said that by right, these should no longer be allowed in commercial. But they didn't go so far as to say even where they are allowed by right in industrial zones, there should still be some guidelines. And they rejected that. But both their rejection and their affirmation of the two different ordinances will be coming to Plumb within a very, very quick period of time. Mr. Everhart is here nodding his head, and Mr. Burnson in his chair is nodding his head. So, you have affirmation all around. But I think both of those items are appropriate. They don't necessarily deal with what's before us. And the whole issue of FAR, as Mr. Shapiro indicated, was addressed some years ago. And we have different categories, it's a major zoning issue, but this doesn't change everything. It says status quo, at least in what the allowable densities would be per different zoning categories are still there, and we can change it by code if we choose.
Mr. Burnson.
Well, Cindy said just about all I wanted to say. I think that we will deal with this judiciously in Plumb, and the council will when it comes before us. You know, this is the problem with some of these blanket charter amendments that were not thought out, and that's why many of us opposed it. But there's a right place for everything in this city, and good planning dictates where that right place is. I noted in today's paper that we, and this is not necessarily on the agenda, but it's along germane to the subject, a judge ruled that the city was required to find locations for an adult business in Tarzana in Ms. Misakowski's district. Mrs. Chick's district, excuse me. That's right, it is Mrs. Chick's district. At any rate, the community plans are very clear, and specific plans are very clear. And these people should know where they may put in a business of this type. It's very clear. There are locations in the city, and I think it was very bizarre on the part of the judge to rule that we are responsible, and we have to be the real estate agents that goes out and finds locations for this or any other type of business. Why can't they do what any other person has to do and look at our community plan, observe the ordinances that state where they may be located? There are numerous locations within the city, and even within that community, where different types of businesses can locate. And I think the judge was way out of order. I just want to put that on the record.
Mrs. Chick.
Laura. Yeah, Laura. Oh.
Times are running.
It's all been said. I'm fine.
Okay. Pass, Mr. Hernandez. It hasn't all been said. Go ahead.
Members of the council, I also rise up. And what I want Mr. Everhart to please make a comment, even though Ms. Goldberg made her comments, and I think they were all taken. If we don't change the ordinance, if we don't deal with this loophole, how could that impact, for example, Mr. Padilla's district, Mr. Pacheco's district, and in what zoning areas should we all be aware of that this could be going on?
Well, I think at this point, it's any commercial zone.
Any commercial zone.
Yes. Yes.
So, Westlake?
Yes, any place where this current zoning is, and somebody builds the same kind of structure. However, I'd like to point out that the ordinances will be before you, and you'll be able to deal with it at that point.
Okay. I just wanted to make everybody aware because it's not just, what happened is someone found some, a unique methodology to increase their floor area ratio in basically what I consider residential community that had a commercial corridor. And it's not only there, but we're facing it now, I think, throughout the whole city because the example has been set. And unless we deal with this issue, it's going to be impacting every one of our council districts and in areas where we least expected it, and it's going to be happening overnight because that's how this example happened in Glassell Park. It started on a Friday night, and by Monday, they had their structures up, and we weren't able to do anything about it. And I know that, for example, we've been changing some zoning in certain areas, trying to create commercial corridors for job creation and so forth. And what we're going to end up is with a lot of storage space, and I think that's the importance of what's before us.
All right. There being nobody else wishing to speak, we'll open the roll on item nineteen. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. That is approved, and we expect to see the ordinances sometime later, but sooner rather than later.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Pacheco.
I have some individuals who wanted to be heard on item number sixteen. Unfortunately, it went past them without them noticing. So, I ask to reconsider item number sixteen and give it an opportunity to be heard. I will state that the committee report is what I do support on item sixteen, though.
Okay. Thank you. There's, yeah, if there's no objection, we'll take that as a motion for a public hearing. Well, first of all, there's no objection to reconsidering item sixteen. Consider it reconsidered, and we'll now open the public hearing and hear from the two Mr. Pacheco, would you ask them also to submit cards when they're done so we have the names for the record? Ah, we have a card. All right, we're back on item sixteen. Go ahead.
My name is Kevor Gohanessian. I'm the owner of the property, five lots, located in Los Angeles. And I owned these properties before '95 and after '95, and I'm very familiar what should I do about these lots over there. Every year, before the end of April, we clean up the weeds, and we take care of these properties because we know that it's for fire hazardous. As usual, I got an employee we send over there. I gave the check cancel that I paid for my employee to take care of it, and the check, it's with the city employees as a proof. And I can show you over here, there's a notice of non-compliance. They send this to me, and they put the location of the lot where they're going to clean up the lot. But this location is wrong. This is not my lot. I got this proof in my hand, I can show it to you anytime you want it. And this is my lot where they are located. It's completely different. I cleaned the weeds before the end of April. Sometimes I do the March, the end of March. And the city, they came and they cleaned the lot the end of August. We're talking like four, five months after I cleaned the weeds. It's normal, the weeds, they're going to grow up. I don't know why they didn't come before that, and I don't know why they didn't inform me. I live in the same address, as I mentioned, before '95 and after '95, and I'm still at the same address at this time. They showed me some pictures over there. They were cleaning my weeds with 50 employees over there. I put one employee over there. It's normally takes one and a half day or two days maximum to clean those weeds for me. They charged me over $9,000 to clean those weeds for me. When I discussed with them at the lot, they said we came at the end of August. It's normal, it's going to grow up. In five months, the weeds, they grow up again, two feet, it's normal. If they know that this is hazardous, why they didn't go after April, first April or first May, and they didn't clean those weeds for the city, not for me, because it's hazardous over there? They knew about that. And they didn't inform me with a mail. They know my address. Why they are not informing me? Why they are not sending me notice? They didn't do that. I've been here four times for the hearings. First I came, they postponed that for me. The second time I came, there was a big issue, another case in front of me. They gave me two minutes to discuss my situation, and I went. Third time, the second time when I came, the employee of the city, he wasn't aware that there was a hearing. And he was surprised when I spoke to him. He said that, "No, I'm going to schedule another one." I said, "Okay." So, they scheduled another one for me, the third time. He showed me pictures that they were cutting the weeds, but on the pictures, I saw that they were cutting my trees. I have a trees over there. They're not supposed to touch my trees. The tree is different, the weed is different. You clean the weed, you don't touch the tree.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but I'm informed by Mr. Pacheco's office that they're going to ask us to continue this for a week so that they can work with you and try to sort this out.
They're going to give me another appointment?
Well, you have to take that up with them. They at least want to talk to you instead of having the council do take action today.
Well, they didn't.
And I would recommend that you do it because Mr. Pacheco said before you got up to speak that he was supporting the committee report. So, I think that he's backing off, he's offering to back off in order to work with you to try to resolve this.
I was here today before 10 o'clock, and this is my fourth time. I'm leaving my job, I'm coming here.
If you don't want us to continue it, we'll ask Mr. Pacheco for his recommendation, and we'll go forward. I suggest that you speak with his office, and if you're going to speak with his office, it would be better to do it before the council takes a vote.
When is it going to be done, this?
Well, suppose we, how about if we hold it on the desk right now, and maybe you can have somebody talk to him? We just want to continue. All right, say something.
Madam Chair, I think it would be in both our interest to continue it. That way, we can go over this thoroughly and step, try and make a quick decision.
All right. So, do you want to pick a time?
Just one week.
One week. All right. So, if that's all right with you, sir, we're then going to pick?
It's supposed to be the fifth time, it's okay, no problem. I'm used to it.
Well, your choice is, we can act on it now, or we can try to resolve it.
No problem. Thank you very much.
We'll continue that for one week.
So, I hope they're going to mail it to me the day it's sent.
Well, they're going to talk to you right now.
All right. I appreciate it for you. Thank you very much.
One week, it's February 8.
That'll be continued till February 8, unless we hear something different. All right, next item.
Item number 20, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, item number 20.
Don't start my time, I want to...
I haven't started your time, I'm waiting until you get there.
Thank you, I was just watching. I'd like to have a report on this.
You haven't pushed the button either.
I know, Madam President, but we need a report on this.
Push the button. I know where the timer falls, but it's...
Don't start my time.
All right. You want a report? All right, we'd like to have a report. We also have somebody who wants to be heard.
Let them be heard, then we have a report.
Do we have staff here? Here comes the staff. Come right up. First, we'll have the report so we can have the public testify on what's exactly before us. Oh, I know this item very well indeed. All right, you don't have to make a report to me, I'm very familiar with it, but why don't you make a report for Mr. Holden and the others?
Okay. Good morning. My name is Laurel Cox, representing the Los Angeles World Airport. And the Los Angeles World Airport is requesting city council approval for the purchase and leaseback of property located at 5535 through 47 West Century Boulevard, which is about a mile east of LAX Airport, and also the purchase of five billboards located adjacent to and east of that property. And the owners have voluntarily approached the department and offered their property for sale and made the leaseback a condition of that sale. And the billboards will not be leased back.
So, in effect, we're eliminating the billboards.
The billboards will be not leased back, but the billboards will be, the income from the billboards will be managed by the department.
Until the next time the lease, for the billboards comes up?
Correct.
And then you'll deal with that at that time?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Holden, you're on.
So, the...
You want to have the public hearing first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, fine.
All right. Mr. Shapiro.
Madam Chairman and members of the city council, I listened to that report rather closely, but I didn't hear it mention that $11,600,000 was being paid for the, by the airport for this motel, and hotel and restaurant, and then they were going to lease it back for $52,000 a month or $624,000 annually in rents. Well, no, if you take $11.6 million and you give, put it in the bank at 6%, which you can do today, you're going to get $696,000, just at 6% for that kind of money that you buy, instead of $624,000. So, first of all, it's not such a bargain. Secondly, they make the statement here that they're doing this for a purpose of noise mitigation. Well, now, if you're doing something for noise mitigation, you're buying a motel for noise mitigation, you've got to explain how. How do you, mitigation usually has been given to people who live close to the airport, and you want to mitigate the noise, so you put down soundproof materials inside and on the roof so they shouldn't. Now, you're going to have strangers who come in, rent rooms in the motel, and you're going to mitigate the noise for the motel owners, for the motel users? How about the other motels? There's hundreds of motels and hotels in the area. Why don't you, is noise mitigation going to be used there? I think this noise mitigation idea was just used as an excuse, so to give you the right to do this thing legally. I don't think noise mitigation is involved. I think something's involved here that's sort of hidden away, and I'd like to know what it is. Why are you buying this motel for $11.6 million and leasing it back to the person for five years, until the five years, and then giving them the option to renew it for two more years if they want to? Is the, how is the motel doing? What is the income on the motel? Is it profit-making? What if the city takes it, has to take it back again? I think there's a lot of unanswered questions here. Mostly, how does the noise mitigation tie in to a purchase of a motel by an airport that's controlled by the city of LA?
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. The public hearing is closed, and I'm going to answer your question. Mr. Shapiro? Mr. Shapiro, I'm answering your question. The way noise mitigation ties in is that under the federal rules for noise mitigation, the airport has two options. It can, it has to offer the properties within a certain sound contour the opportunity to be soundproofed. If the property owner chooses not to take that, then they don't soundproof it because it belongs to somebody else. And at that point, they can, the airport can either buy the property, or they're still deemed in compliance, even if they don't, they're deemed in compliance with noise mitigation. In this case, the owners of the property came to the airport. There are a number of investors, some of them would like to retire and get their money out, and they asked the airport, instead of soundproofing this, to buy the property. And those who want to continue to operate it as a motel will continue to operate it under the leaseback, and those who wish to sell their property will be able to get their money and go away and enjoy life. And Mr. Holden still wants to talk, but go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make one correction to that. There was an error in the transmittal letter for this item, and the purchase as a correction is not a part of the noise mitigation program.
It's not, okay.
The item was not included as part of the application for the PFCs, so this property is not part of the noise mitigation program.
So, it's all right.
However, it is adjacent to the Phase 1 area of the noise residential soundproofing program.
The residential area, right. All right, I stand corrected, this is not the noise mitigation. Would you please make sure that future transmittal letters get it straight? Mr. Holden, you still have a whole lot of time.
If it were straight, I wouldn't have raised the question. You're right, Madam President.
Okay.
These people taking advantage of a golden opportunity, hopefully to bail out early or whenever they choose to do so in this so-called leaseback program. I think you have to come up with a plan first so we know what we need before we start spending money in a piecemeal basis. I'd like to see that done. I think we're in the process of doing it. Sometime, they say, "We're going to do that land acquisition plan." We talk about expansion, we may not talk about expansion. And I personally, not that I'm protesting, but I have a problem with this approach as we began to expand the airport for good cause. And how much we're going to expand, it will be limited to the input from the people in the neighborhood who live there, who would have to endure the noise, and also noise mitigation should, it's been determined that the expansion would generate more noise in the area. So I think that that's the approach we really ought to take. I, I'm looking here, you're talking about billboards, we can go into billboard business. You're talking about the Travelodge and Denny's Restaurant and five billboards. Yeah, I just don't like that approach. We don't need the billboards now. We can get the billboards later. Why buy those guys out? If there's a reason to acquire the billboards now, I mean, there's no noise problem there associated with it. Am I right? It's visual, I mean, it's a noise. So, no, no. If you're going to put on those billboards, "Don't smoke, don't drink when you drive" or something like that, use them for that kind of a purpose, it's fine. I can see reason to require them now and use it for that purpose for the time that we still will have them, but I just think it's not timely, Madam President. And for that reason, if you want to come back and have the whole master plan and say, "We'd like to have this area, and here's the impact it's going to have on a specific area," then I would, I could support it. But I think you guys are doing it, you know, step by step, and that's not good.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Burnson.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Maybe I missed it. Are there existing billboards there?
Yes. Yes, there are.
Are we buying the billboards also? Buying the leases on the billboard?
Yes, we are.
So we're going to own the, we will own the billboards, and the billboard companies will continue to lease them from the city?
That's correct.
Okay, they're not abating the billboards, in other words?
Can't abate them until we own them. No, they're not. They have leases on them.
Okay, and those leases are going to continue to bring us revenue?
Yes, they are.
Is that, is that included in the revenue that we're going to get, the six hundred and some thousand dollars, or what?
Yes, the billboards represent annual revenues of two hundred forty-one thousand and seventy-five dollars to the...
And the motel?
The Travelodge and the Denny's properties will bring to the department a total of three hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars.
So the total is...
It's a six hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars.
And is this property, how is this impacted by the expansion of the airport, this property?
It's, there's no, has been no predetermined use for this property. It's not planned to be part of the LAX master plan at this time. The reason the department is looking to purchase this at this time is that the owners have approached the department, and it was a good opportunity for the department to have some flexibility and to be able to, at a future time, either do some facility or commercial development.
I have some, I have some qualms about this. I really, I think the, you know, I just wonder why we're laying out eleven million dollars because some people want to get out of the particular item here. I don't know, this is your district, and I'm looking to your...
I'm waiting until you're done.
Okay, and I'm going to, I'm going to wait until I hear from the council member of the district, but it just seems to me that this is something that is not an urgent type of expenditure, and we're placing ourselves in the place of some private sector businesses and surplanning them, unless somebody can show me a good reason for that.
Mr. Hernandez.
Let's assume we don't do this today. So today, there's a dollar figure associated with the purchase of the land, and my assumption is one of the reasons why we're doing that is because five years from now or ten years from now, that dollar figure is going to be much higher. Is that part of the logic here?
I have the appraiser that worked with us on the negotiations for this deal, and she worked extensively on this analysis. I'd like Eve Williams to comment.
Please, I mean, I understand what the airport's doing, but I just, would you please go answer my question?
Basically, the value of the property, the Travelodge portion of the property was determined by looking at the land value today as a hold over a finite period of time. The Travelodge is an older property, but it's well-maintained. It still produces income in excess of the land value of the property if you look at a reasonable return, so there's no real reason to demolish the improvements right now. Now, in five to seven years, that will not be the case, and at that point in time, the land value will be much higher based upon other appreciation rates in the area and the future expansion of LAX. The property that we're talking about is comprised of the motel property and the Denny's and the billboards. They're all on one single lot. If you wanted to buy only part of the lot, you would have to have the property subdivided, and that is one reason why the billboards go along with the Denny's that go along with the Travelodge.
So from your perspective, this is a good deal?
I think it's an excellent deal.
And what would be a good deal? I mean, how much more would it be costing us?
I think that this is a very wise purchase, especially considering the fact that I'm also working on some appraisals for the neighborhood to the north, which is in the noise mitigation area. The majority of the people in that area have expressed an interest to be relocated rather than be soundproofed, and so eventually, LAX in the future, in the far and distant future, will most likely have control over that whole area.
Well, Mr. Holden, well, let me go once, because I have, all right, or you go first, and I'll close.
Right, I just, first of all, this Travelodge is on Century Boulevard, right? And what proximity is that to the Hilton Hotel or the Marriott Hotel, east or west?
It's east of the Hilton.
Well, east, that means we have to buy the Hilton? We have to buy the Marriott? I mean, what, how do we use it? I mean, later on, the year two thousand and ten, two thousand and thirty, when everybody's gone, how will the people who are going to succeed us use it for parking lot?
They might.
I mean, I don't understand. And the other thing is that you're paying more for the Travelodge and the Denny's Restaurant than you're paying for the billboards, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
That's true.
Right, you're getting more return on the billboards than you're getting on these two businesses. Yes, you are.
Yes.
You're getting two hundred plus thousand dollars back on the billboards. The total, you break it down for me.
The total for the Travelodge and the Denny's is three hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars a year. The total for the billboards is two hundred and forty-one thousand and seventy-five dollars a year.
Right, just proportionately speaking, they're five billboards, they don't take up much space.
Right, but the billboards represent the highest and best use of the property, whereas the Travelodge does not represent the highest and best use of the property. The land value in the Travelodge eventually, in the next five to seven years, will surpass the value of, that the current improvements are producing.
You know, I, I'm like Mr. Burnson, something is funny in Denmark, and I must tell you that it doesn't make a lot of sense to jump over all this other property that could be of better use, even though it'd be more expensive, and acquire the Travelodge and the Denny's Restaurant and some, a few billboards there, except for the fact it served the best interest of the people who now owns it. That's why they went to the airport. They couldn't sell it to anyone else. If they said, "Let's sell my Travelodge..."
Or they could sell it to someone.
Then let them sell it then.
Part of the problem, then we'd have to pay more for it if we ever...
No, 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 it's a good chance, the guy who owns it now don't want to manage it anymore, want to bail out. For eleven million dollars, I'd bail out also. You've got to be kidding. It's a good deal.
I always wondered what your price was.
My price is eleven million as a start, Madam President. And it goes up. You better get me today.
Mr. Wax.
Mr. Holden is asking some good questions. You're saying that on the property is a hotel, a restaurant, and some billboards, and that the billboards are the highest and best use of the property. That's kind of a stunning statement.
That portion of the property.
I mean, you said it's one lot.
Yeah, it's a unique-shaped parcel, and the area where the billboards are located is in a, it's not a straight squared area, it's really just along the...
I know, but I mean, suddenly, we have, we have a property near an airport. Some people are going to have, want to come to, they're going to want to come to the City Council for a hotel downtown and ask for God knows how much money, and now you're saying, "We have a hotel, and we have a restaurant, and we have billboards, and the billboards are the highest and best use of the property." I, I, I don't know, I'm having a hard time. Mr. Holden asked another good question. He said this is east of the Hilton, it's east of the Marriott, all those, so how, for what purpose would you buy this that wouldn't necessitate you eventually having to buy those other properties, which would be far more expensive?
The Travelodge Hotel is located approximately a block east of the Hilton that you mentioned, and as we mentioned earlier, I think one of the key things that the location is it's strategically located right adjacent to the Phase One noise mitigation area, which would allow the department additional area that we have acquired to do whatever future development from a facility standpoint. They may mean at some point even doing some commercial development, and if we did do that or pursue that, would probably be through an RFP process to find out what the best use of that property would be.
Why would we become the developer of that? So you would actually demolish everything there and then redevelop that property commercially?
It's a five-year lease with a two-one-year options to renew. There's been no predetermined use.
I know, but if you're going to, if it's going to be redeveloped and additional commercial ventures are going to be on there, what is the city even getting involved in that for? Why, that's not an airport use for us to buy a hotel, a restaurant, demolish it, and then have an RFP out there for somebody else to come in and put other commercial ventures on there. I mean, you buy property when you need to remove it and, you know, for noise mitigation and that, but if you're, if you're going to, if you're buying, why does a city or a government agency buy private property and then, and then redevelop it commercially? I mean, that's not the business that we're in.
There's been really no predetermined use. It may turn out that...
If there's no predetermined use, why are we buying it?
Because I think it's, the department felt it was advantageous at this point since the property was made available to us, and it was located in a strategic point.
It's beginning to sound like what Mr. Holden is saying, that someone's asking us to bail them out. I mean, that's what it's starting to sound like to me, and we don't, we don't have a use for it. We may put it to a non-airport use, which is not what the airport is supposed to be in business doing. I'm really concerned about this.
Okay, now, since your time is up, let me try to answer some of that, because I haven't talked yet, and I think you're all entitled to answers to those questions. I can't answer all of them, and this is really the Department of Airports' request, and the Department of Airports', and I think they're trying very hard to answer your questions. But I do want to point out to you that the, one of the alternatives to, we're all thinking of expansion as if we're buying property like this to put runways or taxiways. This is not a piece of property that's going to be used for a runway or a taxiway, but let me give you an example today. One of the alternatives to expanding the airport is to move some of what's on the airport today to property that is not airport property today, like the administration building. They're now looking at putting the administration building in a development they haven't built yet but which they got permits for shortly before I got elected, and which would be adjacent to a residential area and is certain to be controversial, even though the permits already exist. If they do need to move their administration or other facilities that are part of the airport, and if they need the space on the airport for airport space, they're going to go looking in the community for spaces to put this other stuff. And it's a lot less disruptive to do it with a willing seller than an unwilling seller. So part of what the airport has undertaken, and I certainly am sympathetic to everybody's questions here, I'm just telling you that part of what they've undertaken is essentially an opportunistic campaign to acquire land when it is offered so that they will have some options at the point that if and when we ever get to the Airport Commission and the City Council debating an expansion plan. And I can tell you that the expansion plan will not be before us anytime soon, at least half of us will be gone by the time it gets here, the rate things are going. So the question for the airport and the question for us is, what do we do in the meantime? If we do nothing in the meantime, we lose some opportunities that might be useful later, and if we, if we do this, we have, the airport has, they will acquire it, they will have the option. If it turns out they don't need it for the expansion, they will have the opportunity to sell it, and will, if it's worth more money at that time, they'll have made money. Now, I grant you that property speculation is not supposed to be their main business, but they wind, find themselves doing quite a bit of it in any case. Mr. Wax, you're up again.
Who pays the property tax now on the property?
The owner of the property.
The owner of the property, and if it was to sell it to another private developer, I guess under Jarvis, the tax would, the property tax would go up substantially.
Not if they keep the corporation.
And who, if we buy the property, who's going to pay the property tax?
Proprietary interest would dictate that the lesssees pay the property taxes based upon the fair market value of the property.
Will this, if the government owns it, though, does it, will it pay, will it be exempt from property tax?
No, proprietary interest properties that are owned by governmental agencies require the lesssees to pay property taxes based upon the fair market value of the property. Fair market value is whatever the property is sold for. The assessor sets the fair market value.
Does the airport pay property tax on other airport properties at the airport?
It depends on how it's held, is my understanding, but if they lease property to third parties, typically, the leases require the third parties that are unrelated to governmental agencies to pay property taxes. Right.
And if it's used for airport-related services, then there's no property tax?
If it's the third party that leases it from...
No, I mean, if we buy this and say...
If we buy it and put our own parking lot on it, then...
Take Ms. Glander's hypothetical of moving an administration building over there.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I think that's probably a legal issue more than...
I think it's more than a legal issue. It's, I mean, do we, is it exempt from property tax or not in a situation like that?
Ray Algenist with the City Attorney's Office. I believe once the government acquired the property, it would be exempt.
Irrespective of the use for it?
If the government owns the property and, for instance, put an administration building, and we operate the administration building...
And what if we own the property, but we use it for a commercial use, like a restaurant?
If we gave it out to a lesssee, then I believe that it would be taxed based on the fair market value of that lesssee.
So the property taxes...
But I'm not absolutely sure of that. I'm not a tax expert, and I have to research that issue.
Well, it'd be interesting to know, because what is the property tax on this property each year? This property tax is something that governments get to spend unlike airport revenues for non-airport-related purposes. Is there an urgency on this?
I mean, if we continued it for a week to get the answers to these questions, would that be a problem?
To get some more information?
If it...
We have the seller in the background.
Yeah, as far as your question on the property tax, we do have the seller in the audience if you'd like the answer to that question.
No, I'm just uncomfortable, I've heard enough today to make me uncomfortable to vote for this, and I'd actually like to learn more about it. I could, I just can't vote for it on what I know, so if it's an urgency, then I'll just vote no. If it's not an urgency, I'd like to continue.
You tell me, can we hold this over for a week?
We will get whatever necessary information you need to make an informed decision.
Okay, and Mr. Holden will get the same information. All right, so we're going to continue this for one week till the eighth.
Tuesday, the eighth.
Tuesday, the eighth, and if you would please, before you leave, check with both of these council members, make sure you're going to have all the questions listed before you walk out of this room.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that was item twenty. Let's move on to...
Item twenty-two is now before you. Holden called that special?
Mr. Holden, and I, nope, that's yours. Mr. Holden, push the button, please.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Oh, yeah, for the amendment.
Holden called that special?
Mr. Holden, and I, nope, that's yours. Mr. Holden, push the button, please.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Oh, yeah, for the amendment.
Okay, and could you hit the speaker button, please? All right.
Mr. Koch, he's just going to give us-
Mr. Koch, and I will put you on pause. Go ahead.
Item 22 is a motion by Mr. Hernandez. It was considered and approved in the Intergovernmental Relations Committee with just Mr. Holden present. In preparing the report to council, we omitted one of the directions, and that was the, the first two moving clauses in Mr. Hernandez's motion, which was to direct the Housing Department to report on current programs of lead-based paint removal, and also to direct the city attorney with the assistance of the Housing Department and HUD to explore drafting a new ordinance or other amendments to the rent stabilization ordinance regarding lead-based paint. With those two, and then to report those findings to the Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee within 60 days.
All right, so that's an amendment to-
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Hernandez said if I have the amendment, I-
All right. Are you, are you done?
If he said if I have the amendment, Mr. Hernandez, I still move.
All right, well, he's the next speaker. So, if you're done, I will call him.
Yeah, and I move, I move the proposed amendments to be added to the report, and that they do report back to us within 60 days.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 23. I believe there's a person in the public wants to speak on that item.
Yes. Jessica Daraby.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the council. I am here before you as a new citizen, a new voter, a West Side homeowner, and germane to this item and insured of the California Fair Plan. And I'm also here in support of passing item number 23, recommended to you by council members Mizikowski and Foyer. I did not know when I was naturalized, a few months ago and a few blocks away, that I would be swept up in local government so quickly. But I do want to share with you a face to this item and to this pending motion. The California Fair Plan has implemented a policy that directly contravenes legislation enacted by the Los Angeles City Council in the form of ordinances and regulations, which are further implemented by the Los Angeles Fire Department. This was well-thought-out legislation. It has been revised over a period of many years, and it makes sense and imposes the liability and fire risk to offending property owners. We are not offending property owners. We are legally compliant property owners with those ordinances and regulations. But the California Fair Plan has shifted the brush fire risk to us for reasons that remain inexplicable. Item number 23 addresses this issue and tries to bring Fair Plan practices in compliance with the legislation of this body. I strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Welcome to citizenship and welcome to local government. Ms. Mizikowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Basically, what this does is, as I think was explained, there are law-abiding citizens in our brush area, and they are, they go before California Fair Plan for their insurance rates. They are penalized if they live next to a non-law-abiding citizen. And as much as we are addressing that and surcharging those people with whom we have to get compliance over a longer period of time, unfortunately, the byproduct of the California Fair Plan as it now exists is that because people live next door to somebody who hasn't cleared their brush, they are surcharged for that extra risk. This is asking for legislation in, in the California Fair Plan to ameliorate that and not penalize someone who is law-abiding. And I appreciate that this has been recommended from committee and ask for your eye vote.
Thank you. I'm just going to exercise my prerogative as chair and say two things. First of all, I support this particular item because I certainly think the inequities are inequitable. But I do have a serious problem about the Fair Plan in general, because some of you may remember, this was enacted after one of the riots, when there was a lot of burning, and it was designed as an effort to encourage investment in areas that had, at the time, a high propensity to fire. But I would just point out to you that the chief beneficiaries of the Fair Plan have not been those areas, but have in fact been hillside areas in Malibu and some within the city of Los Angeles that are not the ones where it's difficult to encourage investment. And so, I have a problem with the overall concept, but I certainly think as long as it exists, it ought to be fair. And I would also urge your support of item 23. And if there's nobody else, open the roll.
In high-risk areas, well, and-
Mr. Holden wants to be heard.
Yeah, I, it came out of my committee, and I think we talked about the adjacent property owners who failed to comply with the-
I supported it, Nate. I'm not arguing with it.
I understand that. I'm just saying, just for clarity, Madam Chair, there'll be some people who would oppose it once it's approved by us. They says, "Why did you do it?" Especially the people who don't clean away their brush. And those people who are in compliance may be required to spend thousands of dollars in addition insurance coverage for, to just cover the people who are adjacent to their property and then not having done it. Did we suggest that an amendment, basically, call?
What you said in committee was to have, to recommend to homeowners that they resort to small claims action in court against their neighbors if they are in non-compliance, as well as to proceed with, with our own legislative program with the Department of Insurance and with the Fair Plan in order to tell their inspectors, "Look, you know, if you're, if you're going to be surcharging these people and not surcharging the adjacent property owners, there's something unfair, and it could be corrected when, in their assessment practices."
Right, so I thought it was worthwhile mentioning that, Madam President.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item.
Item number 36.
And on item 36, we have somebody wishing to address us, Mr. Kolovos.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Honorable members of the city council, my name is George Kolovos, and I am the owner of the subject property. First of all, I would like to thank Councilwoman Ms. Zikowski, who has paid attention to my project. And Councilwoman Ms. Zikowski, I am most grateful to your passions with respect to a difficult situation. I come before you today with a simple request to continue my case. I regret that I have not always done a very good job to inform, to give the best information about my case. I'm looking forward to next week or two in meeting Councilwoman Ms. Zikowski to try to address her concern thoroughly. Therefore, I am asking the council to continue my case. Thank you, and I definitely, I will appreciate very much if you continue our case.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Ms. Mizikowski.
Madam President, I would ask the council to continue this for one week. I have met with Mr. Kolovos before. We are at a, an impasse in terms of a meeting of the minds, but for one more week, I think we can go ahead and have a continuance and have this matter brought back.
All right, without objection, we'll continue this one week to February 8th. Next item.
Item number 57.
Mr. Shapiro wished to be heard. Mr. Shapiro, are you still here?
I'm here. He's walking forward.
Item 57.
Item 57?
Item 57, Madam Chairman and councilpeople. Item 57 was postponed from Friday when you couldn't get a quorum, and it was number 24 then. And it's a motion made by Ruth Galanter, seconded by Mike Fuhr, that California is suffering from the effects of El Nino. No one, not only has there been little rain in Southern California, but the snowpack. In other words, it poses problems. We all remember 10 years ago when we did have droughts and things had to be done about that. But once the drought disappeared, all care disappeared, and we haven't done anything about it. We've got to do something more than just pass this resolution that we have to, I moved that the council direct the Department of Water and Power to report within 30 days regarding immediate impacts of El Nino. Yes, what we've got to do here, more than anything else, is we've got to get a reservoir. A reservoir has to be built. The, the Regional Department of Water has built one about 50 miles away from here, but that does not help us, because the Metropolitan Water District charges too much. We have to do something-
Mr. Shapiro, if I may point out to you, all that today's motion asks is that the department, in fact, come and report to the committee and the council, and I think your concerns and questions are perfectly valid, but that the appropriate time to discuss them would be when the report comes in.
Well, I want to give some examples as to why this is important. I agree with this motion.
You haven't changed-
I agree they should discuss that, and I agree that the council itself should become aware, that we have to do something about storage reservoirs, we have to do something about the riverbanks of the LA, of the LA River, and we have to do something about cleaning up the aquifers and making sure that settling areas are available, so we can save some of the water that we're getting now, what little water we're getting here this year, we can save that. I think these concerns have to be given directly to the members of the city council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. I couldn't agree with you more. All right, item 57 is before us. This would ask the department to report to the committee, and then the committee will bring its report to the council. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item.
Items number 33 and 62 are closed session items, so now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
All right, we're now going to do public, have public comment on non-agenda items, and Mr. Shapiro is first, to be followed by Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, Mr. Stewart, please, first.
All right, Mr. Stewart will go first, to be followed by Mr. Shapiro. Just remember that we have two closed session items coming up.
My name is Chuck Stewart. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Chuck Stewart, and I'm a leading authority on sexual orientation discrimination. I have my PhD from USC. I was hired by LEPD, Los Angeles Gay and Lesbian Police Advisory Task Force in '92 to write the curriculum and teaching materials for the Los Angeles Police Department. My research at USC was funded by post-California Peace Officer Standards and Training. I look at how to effectively teach sexual orientation training in police academies and so on. I'm also a published author in that area. In '97, there came up an RFP. I have handed out only nine copies of a letter I just wrote to the Attorney General. An RFP came up in, in 1997 that was called the Sexual Orientation Discrimination Expert, otherwise known as SODI Contract. Five companies bid for it. Three of them went to personnel interview, of which I was on two of those companies. One was Shankler and was Squire. The concern I have is that the award was finally given to a company called Hartman PII. I was concerned by that because I didn't understand it. So, I started this process of writing to various agencies and, and people and personnel and so on. Finally, I filed a complaint with the city's Ethics Commission, which then had Rick Tuttle in the Controller's office conducting an investigation that took about a year. And a few months ago, he came back with a report which revealed a lot of what occurred. First off, the company that won at PII Hartman was not the lowest qualified bidder. The lowest qualified bidder should have been, was Squire, and the award, I believe, should have gone to the Squire Company and not Hartman PII. And in fact, when they interviewed, Sharon Schuster interviewed William Fujioko, he admitted that the charter requires a contract to be awarded to the lowest, most qualified bidder. That's a direct quote. And yet, he turned around and gave it to Hartman PII. That still confused me as to why that occurred. I believe it should go to the lowest qualified bidder, which should be Squire, not PII Hartman. There's also a conflict of interest problem. PII happens to be a current contractor for the city of Los Angeles and runs what's called ODI, the Office of Discrimination Investigation. They handle virtually all discrimination complaints in the city of Los Angeles. This RFP, the SODI RFP, requires them to evaluate all complaints on sexual orientation. That means they will have to evaluate their own work. That's a conflict of interest. I therefore also think this contract should be revoked because it is a conflict of interest. Final thing is, why did Fujioko give this contract to Hartman PII? He was asked by the Ethics Commission, and he gave three reasons. When they investigated those three reasons, they found they were not valid. In fact, one area in particular, which was the, I have to look at my letter, which is in front of a number of you, he claimed that the methodology of Hartman PII was sufficient to handle the contract, as were Squire and Shankler. However, the city personnel prepared a report for the city council in which it had negative comments about PII and Hartman. They said that, in fact, that, I would have to look here, but these sentences were removed from that report before it was handed to you, the city council. It means that William Fujioko purposely removed negative comments about PII Hartman before he gave it to you for approval. Am I down to like a minute? Okay. My concerns are, this RFP should not have been awarded to Hartman and PII for many, many reasons, for conflict of interest, for them being negative, and he removed that from your report he gave to you, also that he did not give it to the lowest qualified bidder, even though he admitted that's who it should go to, and it's also state law and so on. So, my request is, I have three requests. One, the contract to PII Hartman be revoked, be given to the appropriate people, which is Squire. Second thing is, I'd like to have Fujioko recommended, if not terminated, for giving an award that he had no right to do so, and in fact, for lying to you by removing those negative comments before he gave you those, the, the report for recommendation.
And third?
And the third item is, that there is a conflict of interest with PII, and there's no way they can handle this contract, which the other two contractors did not have those problems.
All right. Thank you very much. As you know, we can't, under the Brown Act, we're forbidden to take action on an item that's not on the agenda today, so we'll have to look into it separately.
I have given this to the mayor and so on, but I'm coming to you because I'm not seeing the action from the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Mr. Shapiro.
Madam, Madam President and members of the city council, I'd just like to say that Chuck Stewart, PhD, has been sending me a pile of material about this case that I just spoke to you for three minutes on. It's well documented, and it's well set up. And I spoke to Mr. Fujioko about the, the points that are being raised in here, and he didn't think, seemed to think that they were too important, but I'm going to speak to him later about that. But be that as it may, I just want the council to understand that I understand the points Mr. Stewart's bringing up, and I agree with them. And I think it's something definitely you got to look into a little more closely. What I want to talk about this morning is the open-door policy of all elected officials that I spoke about last week. The chair at that time, the president at that time told me that I never called his office to get an appointment, therefore, he didn't need the open-door policy, because this door is open to anybody who wants to come in there at any time.
Mr. Shapiro, talk about the policy. Don't talk about individual council members.
Well, he, he-
Yeah, but-
I'm not talking, I'm just talking about, he raised that issue here with me.
Yeah.
So, I followed up anyway.
We want to hear, all right. We want to hear your comments on the policy.
Okay, I won't talk about him. But I called a certain councilperson's office to get an appointment with him and called three times.
But as you probably know, as you probably know, he's been somewhat occupied.
I understand he's been occupied, but his staff isn't. His staff could take care of the problem.
You don't think so.
Give me an appointment at least. There's no appointment available. That brings me to the main point that I want to discuss with.
Good.
Everybody here says, all these councilpeople say, the city attorney says it, the city controller says it, the mayor of the city says it. We don't have to have an open-door policy for any citizen, because our doors are open all the time. All you've got to do is call, and you can get in and see us. And somehow or other, you can't get in to see us, and that's the purpose of the open door. And that's why Mayor Bradley and Mayor Yordi used it, and they used it effectively for the short time that they did use it. But I think every public servant ought to give the general public the idea that, "I'm available. You can see me any time that you want. My open door is, my door is going to be open all day. Next month, on the 5th, on the 15th, on the 25th, on the 30th, whenever. But it's open if you want to see it. Don't tell me people don't want to see you, because people come to me. At every meeting, people come to me. They call me at my house. They have problems. The problem, all I can do with these problems is refer them to the respective councilperson who's involved, or to the mayor of this, of the city, and then sit back because I can't get in to see them." And I don't think that's right. I think everybody, and the city council specifically, should say, "One day in the month, every council member, every elected official must have an open door, that whoever wants to see them can see them on the 5th of the month, on the 10th or whatever." But they can see them without any trouble. And don't tell them you can call and make an appointment, because calling, making appointment takes too long.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
That closes the public hearing. And just think, if we all had open-door policies, you wouldn't have all those people coming to see you. Next item.
Motion for posting a referral.
So ordered.
Request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Farrar requests to be excused on February 1st for personal business meets policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember Savonich requests to be excused on Wednesday, February 2nd, Friday, February 25th, and Tuesday, March 7th. Motion is required for February 25th.
Ms. Goldberg moves. Mr. Padilla seconds.
Councilmember Glantor requests to be excused on February 25th and February 29th and March 1st. This meets policy for city business.
That's approved. Yeah, I know you're going to object. I can see.
Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on March 29th, a leave at 12:30, and April 14th. This meets policy for personal business and city business.
That's approved.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bernson.
I don't know whether I want to be excused tomorrow, but I certainly probably am going to be late. I am attending a 9:30 session at LAFCO, interviewing people who have submitted applications for the study. So I probably, hopefully, I'll get here, but I don't know when.
All right. Is that all right? Are we okay on the quorum?
Councilmember Bernson to arrive late.
Okay.
Now is the time for closed session items.
All right. We have two closed session items. We're going to take up the Kimple matter first. Sorry. I see you frown over there, but Gail will explain it to you. So anybody who's not involved in the closed session item, if you will excuse yourselves quickly and quietly, we'd appreciate it. All right. Are we on? Looks like we're on. Next item, Mr. Burke.
The desk is clear.
All right. We obviously have a number of adjourning motions today, and I'd like to start, for all of us, I've been a little choked up over this, but I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Margaret Hart Farraro, whom most of us knew, some of us better than others. Her passing is, of course, the reason that Mr. Farraro is not with us this morning. And I think we spent most of yesterday celebrating both her life and her passing and telling stories about Margaret. I have to say that one of the things that always impressed me so much was about the relationship between Margaret and John. I know of no other couple that I have ever met in my entire life that, after the length of the relationship they had, would negotiate the kind of deal in which she stopped smoking and he stopped playing racquetball, and each of them gave up something very dear to them in order to get the other one to do something that each of them felt was important. And there are not too many couples around who can make that kind of a claim. Margaret was born in Edgerton, Missouri. She was one of eight sisters and one brother. Ran away from home and struck out on a career of her own, came to Los Angeles eventually, made all kinds of money in Los Angeles, and wound up collecting John Farraro as her prize. And he collected her. Her survivors include her son, Thomas, and his wife, Sharon Jacobs, from Massachusetts, of course, her husband, John Farraro, her daughter, Morgan, and her husband, Donald Most of Agoura Hills, five grandchildren, Will, Margaret, and Nathaniel Jacobs, and Madison and Mackenzie Most, and her sister, Kathleen McFarlane. And in a gesture typical of the Farraro family, the family asks that, instead of flowers, that donations go to the Margaret and John Farraro Chair and Effective Local Government at the School of Policy Planning and Development, where else? USC, University Park, Los Angeles, 90089, for anyone who wants to send a check. We all express our condolences, and we're going to be telling Margaret's stories for a long time. Mr. Bernson.
Yes. I know this is going to be all members, and I'm not going to make a long speech, although I was very close with Margaret and John. I just want to, I'll just relate something that really tells the story about Margaret more probably than anything else. And my wife, that came up with this, she said, when you were first elected, and we were strangers to the city and everything else, she says, "When I met Margaret Farraro, she immediately made me feel at home, like I was comfortable." And that was the way she was. She was that way with everybody. She had a great wit and sense of humor. And I think the relationship that you pointed out between John and Margaret was absolutely one of the most unique and wonderful relationships that you'll ever see, and my sympathy goes with John and the family.
Ms. Chick?
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to let it rest with what has been said already and keep my comments personal with our president, Mr. Farraro. I would like also that we not, in memory of lives lost since hope has not been given up, as far as I know from this morning, but that we say prayers in conjunction with the crash of Alaska Airlines 261 in support of the families and friends of the 88 passengers and crew. In addition, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of a very special woman, Ms. Ava Donner, who passed away at the age of 77 years on Tuesday, January 25th, due to the complications of a stroke. She lived in Palos Verdes but was very involved with the City of Los Angeles, because, as a businesswoman, long before this was more common, she started a firm called Engineering Associates 35 years ago, and has, in that capacity, done outstanding work for a variety of projects and departments of the city. She was a strong advocate, especially through NABO, a national organization of women business owners, for women's issues, equality, women and minority issues, and very much will be missed by her friends and business associates.
Mr. Bernson.
Yeah, I thought everybody wanted to say something about Margaret, but I'll.
I expect a lot of them will, but we'll do the others as we go.
I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Eleanor D. Pazano, mother of Tony Pazano of Northridge. Tony is the president of the Sherwood Forest Homeowners and very, very active in the community. Serves on the Northridge Citizens Advisory Committee. She's survived by two sons, Kenneth and Anthony, and two daughters, Rose Butler and Phyllis Pittman, 15 grandchildren, 33 great-grandchildren, and 10 great-great-grandchildren. I would also ask that we adjourn in memory of Shirley Whitney. Shirley was 89 years old. She was a leading volunteer for political movements and so forth in the San Fernando Valley. And I recall when I was a, first starting to run for office, that if you didn't have Shirley's approval, you had a tough time. And fortunately, I did have her approval and her support, but she passed away, and she served on many, many campaigns. Originally started as a Democrat, wound up as a Republican, and at the end, I think she probably was independent, I'm not sure, like some of us. But anyway, she'll be missed, and she helped a lot of people who aspired to run for office.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a word regarding Margaret Farraro, and John for that matter. You know, a lot's been said about how unique Margaret was, but the special quality, the profound sense of commitment and love that John and Margaret obviously shared is something toward which all of us can aspire and all of us can emulate. It's accessible to everybody, but very, very rarely attained, and even from a relative distance. That gentle humanity was something that was very striking and really quite profound. I also want to ask that we adjourn, as a council, in memory of Artis Hicks, who is the mother of Joe Hicks.
All members.
All members.
She, a devoted wife and mother. She was most deeply committed to her family. She was survived by her husband of 65 years, Joseph Hicks, her son, Joe, her daughter, Ann Roberts, two sisters, seven grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. And in lieu of flowers, the family asks that donations be made to the Alzheimer's Association.
Ms. Goldberg. Yes, I just wanted to add that I think probably my fondest memories of Margaret were kibitzing at events. She was probably the world's greatest kibitzer. For those of you who didn't get a chance to sit down next to her some evening and hear her running commentary about everyone and everything in the room, you certainly missed something in life. But she, you know, but it was never mean. I mean, that was the thing that was amazing. It was sharp at times, but it was never mean-spirited. It never made you feel like she was lauding it over someone or looking down her nose at anyone, but it was right to the point and always right on target. And I think that it was a quality that showed tremendous intelligence and insight, and I know that there'll be a lot of events we'll all go to, but we'll miss having a chance to sit down next to her for a few minutes and hear her just sort of tell what's going on in the room. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Ms. Glantor. Members of council, first, I'd like to ask us to adjourn in memory of Guadalupe Flores, who my wife and I, as we were driving home from the funeral fun, passed away. That was my wife's aunt. And I'll get the details for that. I just wanted to share that in regards to Margaret, I think she touched each and every one of us in very few seconds. I considered her a very strong woman. I think a lot of the comments I hear from Council President Farraro come from Margaret. And at least the part about me eating too many tortillas and tamales and bandolce, but she was someone who inspired me, gave me a lot of strength. And at times when I needed that strength, looking at Margaret and talking to Margaret in very short periods of time, it made me realize how fortunate I was and how fortunate she was. And the realities are, we all have Margaret's stories because of that. I remember being able to, we were just at Mr. Lewiski's house, coming to winter, he celebrated the opening of Staples Center, and in Margaret's fragile way, I was able to help her and John get to the car. And the reality was, she made it seem like she didn't need that help, and that she could stand on her own. And she did that, and I think she touched us in that way. I just want to share, another thing is that she basically, her and John represent some real strong role models about what relationships are about. And since her passing away, it's been a constant thought of mine, and I'll be missing her as well as I know Council President John will, because she was such a part of him. What I wrote on my card to him was that she's in God's hands, just like he's always been.
Mr. Holden.
I don't know what can I say, except that clearly, a book could be written about the stories that Margaret Farrara told, and it would make us all very happy to read them over again and again. And it's, a lot of information would be contained in such a book about how one can live a life, be happy, and enjoy it. I know when I first heard about her illness, my mother had the same situation about 18 years ago, and a couple of years thereafter, I heard on the radio about Ms. Farrara having an aneurysm. I got on the phone and I called John. I didn't, I was not elected. I explained to him, John, here are some of the problems that you, some of the situations you have to deal with, about how they feel about themselves and so on, having had that experience, and how to, wanted to make them live and stay alive, with that which he appreciated. And he shared it with Margaret. And so when I would see her from time to time at events, I know how to help people up in the wheelchairs and get them in and out of the cars, and I was just, I loved to do that for John and for Margaret. But I got to tell you that John is a wonderful person also. He was voted and recognized as the husband of the year for the kind of support he gave to his wife. And I would say that of the decade, Farrara showed us all how it could be done, and with a smile on his face, no matter how tough the times were from time to time, because I know that they were, but he did it with a smile and enjoyed every day of it. And so, John, thumbs up. To Ms. Carlyle, who's here, she sat through the whole meeting, very active in our community. Would you raise your hand, Ms. Carlyle? Come stand over here next to me. Ms. David Carlyle, K. Carlyle, just passed away January 15th. He's married to this lovely lady here, Mrs. Alma Carlyle. They lived in the 8th District, on 8th Avenue in my district for more than 40 years, and were very active in the neighborhood. Mrs. Carlyle was a member of the West Adams Heritage Association. He died at 73. That's Waha. For those of you who don't know that, Mrs. Carlyle served with the Engineering Department for the City of Los Angeles, where she was responsible for assisting in designating the historical sites, and just left city government two years ago. But this to her husband, he was one of the first, he was the first West Coast graduate from the academy, the Army Academy. West Coast Military, West Point. He was the first African-American, west of the Mississippi, to be graduated from West Point. He served in an all African, they called it Black Army at the time, and he served in Korea, where he led his troops, a member of the 24th Infantry Division, the division which pushed the North Koreans right back up to the China border before the Chinese broke loose and to attack them. And some of the African-American soldiers, you got, this is African-American month, so I am saying this. They were court-martialed, some of them, because they didn't want to take the hill with more than, 80% of their division had been killed. I had a guy who I served with in Italy, Woody Ivy, was also wiped out in that fight. But her husband, Captain Carlyle, was honored by the Korean government, over and over again for a job well done in defending South Korea. So, Mr. President, Madam President, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Captain David K. Carlyle, who just recently passed away. And he left his wife, Alma, three children, and two grandchildren. I assume one of them is here today.
Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that the special quality of the love between John and Margaret was not something that we saw, but something that we felt, and something that we all felt a part of. I think that's why we enjoy talking to them, Margaret in particularly, so much at the events that we saw her, because it was not only an honor of the relationship, but being made a part of it. And I think that's why there were as many people yesterday at the service, because everyone who knew them felt that love and was made a part of it. And it really embraced not only the two of them and anyone around them, but really that that is good for and about Los Angeles. So it really has been a special honor to know them as a couple. I would also like the council to adjourn in memory of Ruth Isabel Gelb. Ruth Gelb is a longtime resident of the San Fernando Valley. She passed away on Monday. She was 86 years old and enjoyed 57 years of marriage before the passing of her husband, Charles. During her life, she was actively involved in numerous charitable organizations, such as Bene Brith, City of Hope, the Venders Administration Hospital, Mid Valley Police Association, where she helped establish the Charles T. Gelb Memorial Scholarship in conjunction with the Van Nuys Area Police Station. She was honored by many of these organizations, and in fact, named Woman of the Year by the City of Hope. She and her family, many of us know Ricky Gelb and her son, George.
Oh, is this Ricky's mother?
Her son Ricky and her son, George.
I'd like to be a co-author on that, please.
Not only made family the centerpiece of their life and the centerpiece of their business. If you know the Gelb family, it's a multi-generational business operation where it's passed on and working together. They also play together, and they also give to the community together. And obviously, I think they learned an awful lot of that from their matriarch, Ruth Gelb. She's survived by George and Ricky, her two sons, a daughter, Joy Myers, a daughter-in-law, Robbie Gelb, seven grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren.
Sign on as well.
We'll do all members on that. Everybody, there's a little chorus here, so I think we're going to get all members. Do you want to?
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, I attended a rosary for a woman in my district. Her name was Lupita Ramirez. And during one of the eulogies during those services, a reference was made to an old saying, which is, "The size of a person's heart can be measured in large part by the amount of love others give to that person." And having attended the services yesterday, I know that was the case for Margaret. And even in my short time here on the City Council, had the blessing of meeting Margaret several times, and can attest to all the stories and all the feelings being shared today about her. And I know John's at home watching, so, John, we love you and we're praying for you. But I know the saying was also true for Lupita Ramirez. Originally born in El Paso, California, she spent most of her time in the San Fernando Valley, and is best known in the community for her 35 years of activism. And as I read her track record of what she was involved in, what she accomplished, it would put most public servants to shame. She started out being involved through the PTA as her children were going through school, but was instrumental in the development of the Head Start programs in the San Fernando Valley, the establishment of the North Valley Occupational Center, Los Angeles Mission College, Northeast Valley Health Corporation, and the Chicano Studies Department at Cal State Northridge. She was one of the founding members of LULAC, the League for United She was one of the founding members of LULAC, the League for, of United Latin American Citizens, and the Raza Unida Party. And at one point, she even ran for the 39th Assembly District, so certainly a very active individual, very much committed to the community and for the, for the betterment of the whole.
Mr. Wax.
I was really surprised when I, when I read that Margaret and John were married in 1982. I was on the council 11 years before that, and I can't even imagine now, as I look back, that there was ever a time when they weren't a couple together. You know, it really, it really surprised, you know, you just grow to a point where there's, where you know nothing other than what we ended, what it ended with. And I thought yesterday's service was really beautiful. It was an exquisite church, it was a beautiful service, and it just, all of her beauty inward and outward just radiated throughout there, and it was really quite an honor to be a part of it. I'd also like, I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of my uncle, Daniel Davis, who passed away yesterday. He has a lifetime career as a high school teacher in Pennsylvania, and was married to my mother's sister, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
All members. All members on that. Mr. Walters.
Thank you. I shall always remember Margaret Farraro as a woman of indomitable spirit, despite her infirmity, that she just proved there wasn't anything you couldn't overcome if you worked at it. I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Reverend Terry McGee, passed away on January 28th. He was pastor of the Unity Faith Missionary Baptist Church, and I understand he was a big man with a big heart, and most of all, he cared about the homeless. He enjoyed feeding and providing clothes for the homeless. He's survived by his wife, Louise McGee, his daughters, Elisa Gray and Teeny McGee, his son, Terrence McGee, and five grandchildren.
Cut it all off.
I have one announcement first.
Sorry, an announcement.
The Planning Land Use Management Committee will meet in 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Council is adjourned.